And we're going to go ahead and adjourn into executive session for ORS 192.6602E, ORS 192.6602B, ORS 192.6602H.
Thank you.
Regular session, I'd like to welcome our guests this evening. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna start out with an action item. We have consideration of action as a result of complaint against a board member. Do you have a motion this evening?
So moved.
It's moved, is there a second?
Second.
For, for, for the record, Mr. Chairman, I know I just think, Director Stadler, if you'd say the, the title of the resolution in your motion.
A resolution censoring Director Todd White, number twelve dash twelve two zero one six.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, and we had a second?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay. Alright, I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution. It's whereas the Silver Falls School Board is responsible for the governance of the schools in the district. Whereas the Silver Falls School Board has established policies which govern the conduct of its directors when communicating with the public. Whereas the Silver Falls School Board acts as a fact-finding body for the public when issues involve board policies and their fair implementation. Whereas Director Todd Wright has violated policy BBF, Board Member Standards of Conduct, by using social media in a way that has resulted in disrespect to members of the public by characterizing those who disagree with his positions as delusional, disgrace to America, nuts, or name of community member is what's wrong with America. Such naming and shaming goes beyond civil discourse and violates policy BBF, which calls upon board members to model the way we want to, want our students to conduct themselves in conversations about political and social issues. Now therefore be resolved that Silver Falls School Board censors Director Todd White for his comments to members of the public on social media and is publicly separating itself from Mr. White's actions. The Silver Falls School Board asks that Todd White carry out the duties of director by adhering to board policy. If Director White cannot, or does not, take such corrective actions, the Silver Falls School Board asks that he resign from office. This resolution is effective upon passage adopted by the Silver Falls School Board this day, the twelfth day of December two thousand sixteen. I also like to make a couple, some other comments. Just to make it clear, I've seen a lot of, lot of things out in the news and, and on emails that we've received. First, I want to explain what censure is. Censure is an official condemnation, reprimand, or criticism leveled at a board member by his peers. Censoring does not remove the board member from office or technically impede his ability to serve. Censoring can be an important means of distancing the board from counterproductive behavior since silence in some cases might be interpreted as tacit endorsement or might give fodder to accusations of conspiracy. In that way, it can help guard other board members and their organization from liability resulting from rogue members' comments or actions. So, other things I'll let clarify, this is censure, not censor. This action does not suppress anyone's opinions or speech. This action is not being taken because of anybody's opinion. It, it, it's regarding tactics using disrespectful language against those who may be in disagreement to opinions in violation of board policy BBF, Board Member Standards of Conduct. Also, the board, this board of directors does not have any authority to remove anyone from the board as each member has been duly elected. Any other comments? Alright then, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in a second, any further discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alright, I'd like to invite our student reps, I believe we have Ellie and Sophie here this evening. Thanks for coming.
So, here are some of the things that have been going on at the high school recently. Our boys have lost two games and won one. Last week, last week, one game got canceled because of the snow.
And with girls basketball, the girls have won three games and lost two. And our most recent was La Salle on Saturday, and the boys and girls will both play on Wednesday.
The swim team has been doing well, their next meet is at home tomorrow.
And the wrestling, most of, the recent, or the most recent wrestling meet was on Friday in our main gym. The boys and girls wrestling have put in a lot of effort already this season and are looking good.
An update on Interact Club, they just went shopping for the Tree of Giving and wrapped up all the presents. There are a few volunteer activities coming up soon.
And with ASB, we just finished our Tree of Giving activities as well, and we raised fifty-three hundred dollars towards families in need for gifts this year. We went shopping for presents on Monday and got them all wrapped and delivered to the schools.
An update on National Honor Society, there was a Christmas Tree Festival and they helped kids decorate crafts and Christmas trees.
Great, any questions for these ladies?
How many gifts were you guys able to get for the Tree of Giving?
There was like, there was like five presents on like each child. So there was probably like, how many, if each person got like two kids?
Mm-hmm, and a hundred kids.
Hundred kids, wow, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing that again.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks for coming this evening, appreciate it. Alright, well good, next we'll shift it up to audience with visitors, like to read a statement. Welcome to the regular business meeting of Silver Falls School Board. We're glad you're here and we welcome your, welcome you to address the board at this time. Please be certain to sign in before you present, there's a pad right up here. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative, representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks up to five minutes. A second audience with visitors will occur later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. Would anybody like to address the board this evening?
Hi, this is Nassim Raka. And I'll make this short and sweet, thank you. I appreciate you taking, doing your due diligence, asking the right questions, taking this seriously. I want you to know that I'm ever the optimist in that, addressing you, Mr. White. I am ever the optimist and I believe that good intentions to build community can go a long way. And I'm here to help the board, every single member of the board in any way possible. I intend to be at your meetings, I intend to be an active member, and I really thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Inez Bradford, and I make this really quick. Last month, I came before the board with my strong concerns on how the incidents on November eighth were being handled. I now would like to thank publicly Mr. Belando and Mr. Lou Allen, and I'm sure the many others who have worked diligently to right some wrongs that had occurred. Reading an article recently posted in the Statesman Journal which referenced a course of action gave me great confidence, confidence in the leadership going forward. These include bringing in professionals that can support staff and supply them with the tools needed to foster dialogue in a safe way and utilizing their advisory groups that are already in place as an environment where respect and cultural sensitivity can be discussed. Knowing that steps are being taken and a plan is being implemented to reduce the likelihood of such occurrences happening, happening again gives me pride to be such a part of a community. Thank you again for hearing our concerns and responding accordingly, so, just wanted to thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Nevs. I want to sincerely thank you for listening with the intent of hearing us and understanding this community's request for ongoing comprehensive diversity education and training. This request came in a time when tensions were high, emotions were confusing, and lots of fingers were being pointed. To the members of the board who were able to see that discrimination and prejudice would destroy our collaboration and understand that accountability, vulnerability, and relationship building are the keys to our thriving community, we thank you. To those of you who understand that just because we have not, you have not experienced prejudice and discrimination does not mean that it's not there, your awareness is heartening. All of our children deserve to be accepted and feel worthy regardless of race, ethnicity, nationality, differing abilities, mental and/or physical, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, gender expression, religious creed, or individual political opinions. So thank you to those of you who were able to be vulnerable, who used self-reflection to examine your own perceptions and those perceptions that differed from you and then took carefully planned action. Because of your proaction, our children have a more positive role model to refer to as opposed to systemic denial and disregard. The act of becoming accountable for problems and issues even in the face of strife takes courage and renews our confidence. Acting with courage and vulnerability is a process that requires self-regulation. So our children and the community at large appreciate your ability to take action using humility, reflection, and the awareness that improvement is possible. Let's keep moving forward, listening to each other and collaborating with respect.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening.
Ms. Diane.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, I have prepared a statement to make this evening. However, in light of the action that was taken just a few minutes ago, I'm going to just allow you to read this on your own time. I think it would be important to move on. And in light of my, my friends talking as well, I do agree that your action is appropriate. And I really do hope that we can move forward in a positive proactive way. That's what we want, and that's what we're here for, is to support our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, the staff, the personnel, and the school board with having a successful, wonderful district with people who can behave themselves in an appropriate manner as an elected official. And I appreciate your time talking to us and giving us the, the effort to really make a difference. And we are here to stay and we are here to help with anything that you need. So I'm gonna go ahead and just leave this be and go from there. Any questions for me? Comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Lisa Leslie, signed it in the back, is that, okay, great. So, yeah, like everybody else, appreciate what you guys have done here tonight. This is an audience, as I understand it, so does that mean I can ask a question of a board member? Is that a possibility or not?
We'd rather not.
How about if I toss it out there and then you decide? Okay. Recently, we've had things written about us or about actions we're taking in town, my husband and I, in the, in the local paper, that haven't been entirely accurate. So we know that can happen. And I'm concerned about a quote that was in the Statesman Journal, that Mr. Buckles was quoted there with a description of what bullying means. And I really think that what's gone on in the district lately has been great and, and that there's a lot happening. I'm hoping that board members are also being educated about bullying. So I'd love to give you an opportunity to clarify that if you would like to. The statement said that bullying had to, basically, I'll paraphrase, but it basically said that bullying had to happen face to face. So that's why I wanted to come up here tonight, was just to give you a chance if you'd like to address that. If not, I understand what you're saying, that you may not want to do that.
No, absolutely. Thank you, I kinda read that and said, oh boy, you know, you have to take it in context. But, you know, there's, there's, like, I think the state, the comparison I use was like on a school bus where, you know, the child has to go there, and the kids are there, and this Facebook group that people have been engaging on is a place where people choose to go to. And they choose to debate vigorously on there. And at the moment, you know, that's where, that I was using it in that context, it's kind of hard to, it's, you know, it's like someone who was, be very, you know, it's just, that's a place where, as I'm, I'm not a member of the group, I'm not on there, but I fully, I understand that that's where lots of intense discussions go on.
Okay.
And so, and we've, I've been seeing where some of this stuff has wandered away from there.
Okay.
And so I'd just like to put that in a little bit of context, so it's, you know. So no, I'm fully against bullying, absolutely.
Okay, great. And, and I just, I guess to follow that up, I would hope that the board members are invited to whatever diversity training happens for the district and that you would take advantage of that, you know, and learn all you can about what it means to bully and how, the different ways that that can happen that might be not as obvious as some people might think, so, thanks.
Thanks, Lisa. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Discussion items, we have proposed revisions to policies IGDF, student fundraising activities. Any comment on that one? JED, student aptices and excuses. Any comments? Thanks, Andy, for making those changes.
Sure. Absolutely.
JC, JFC, student conduct and discipline? JG, student discipline? And JHCCF, head lice? No comments. Okay, Andy, did you want to talk about the next one regarding the WESD service plan?
Yeah, we resolve or acquire quite a few services from the Lamont ESD through dollars that we receive from the state of Oregon that purchase those services. And in our ESD, as a component district, a school district within our ESD, we're required every two years, you as a board, each board in the WESD district is required to take action on the local service plan. So, each of you has received a copy of that local service plan. It has, excuse me, essentially remained unchanged since it was approved by you two years ago, but you're required to take action. So, that's a brief summary. You can surely ask any questions if you have any on the document, but it's an action later in the meeting.
Any questions on that? All right, move on to Andy. The governor's proposed K-12 education budget and related school funding information, including measures 98 and 99.
Yeah, it's quite a mouthful of things, but they are somewhat related. I don't want to spend a ton of time on these simply because there is so much yet to be known about many of these. But the governor has released her state budget, her biennial budget, which includes 8.015 billion for K-12 education in the state of Oregon. Again, this is preliminary, as it's the governor's budget, but it's what she is submitting to the state, to the state legislature. With that said, we also have received information, estimated information based upon current service levels. So, in other words, if, if all of the positions and the services provided at all K-12 schools in the state of Oregon were to be replicated now or at the administration of the new budget, the cost is estimated to be at 8.4 billion dollars. And so, you can do, you can do the simple math, and that is that the governor's proposed budget is approximately 300, close to actually 400 million dollars short to be able to maintain current service levels. Now, as we get into the legislature and as, you know, the wrangling that generally occurs, I think it's fair to say that the final approved budget over the course of the last two bienniums has actually been higher than what was submitted by the governor. So, if that trend were to continue, and we use the last two as an example, that increased amounts for K-12 education is anywhere between 400 and 600 million dollars more. So, that's refreshing, that's good to know, and that offers, I think, a level of optimism. However, there are so many variables at play here, and I'll mention the two that are included in, in the, in my report, one specific to measure 98. That was recently approved by the voters and with a specific target of increasing graduation rates and reducing dropout, dropouts using a variety of methods. That is, is planned to be approximately $800 per student, high school student across the state of Oregon, and the governor has included approximately $400 per student to fund that addition to the education budget, where the additional $400 per student is coming from is yet to be known. Similarly, we have a mandate related to elementary PE, and that was actually approved by the legislature in 2007 with a 10-year way of discovering how it would be funded and financed. It's, it's a pretty significant impact, and while we all see the merits of it, there's no doubt about it, I think there's some very serious conversation beginning to happen now, pre-session, about what does this mean? And at a time when, you know, the governor's budget doesn't even meet current service levels, and we now have a new mandate, I can't call it unfunded, but it could very well be unfunded mandate, and only half the funding for something just approved by the voters, it starts to be a bit of a head-scratcher. How is this all going to work? So, my intent by sharing that with you is while, you know, I think there's some effort by quite a few folks to be able to maintain existing levels, there are some new things coming on board that, that we should be very, very attentive to, especially the administration of things like measure 98 and the new PE mandate. So, I'm, I'm just going to leave it at that point, simply because I don't have the answers, but we are beginning to have some very serious and, and I think, necessary conversation. You as, as a board, your representation in the Oregon School Boards Association, our affiliation with OEA, COSA, OSCE, all of those groups are very, very attentive to this and to the funding levels that are required, really, to make, not just make schools operate, but make schools operate in a way that, with the appropriate funding that allows us to administer services that are necessary for continued growth in our kids. Got lots of folks talking about everything from graduation rates to performance of our students to the third from the bottom in the nation related to graduation. There are lots of things going on out there, and bottom line for me is, in order to adequately, I guess, adequately and appropriately address the needs of our, of our students, it's going to be very difficult to do from a flat funding or a current service level funding standpoint. So, I encourage you to be attentive to it, and I'll give you updates as I can as we move ahead.
Thanks, Andy. I'm actually going to Capitol tomorrow to talk to some representatives about some other issues. Any specifics you'd like me to carry with me, I'd be happy to tag, tag that in if my other discussion I'm having.
There, there is some rulemaking by the state Department of Education specific to the implementation of measure 98, and there are some questions about what that will ultimately look like. And again, I realize you're talking maybe more on the legislative side, but any kind of influence we can about use of those dollars and adequate funding. If the intent is for $800 for students to occur, then it sure seems to me that, that there ought to be some attention to that as well. The PE mandate is, again, while it's, while it's, it's important, at the same time, the question is, where are we going to come up with, with those dollars? Not just, and we're having a conversation with administrators later this week, specific to our school district, but it's not just being able to administer them specific to our schools. Again, we have unique schools, some without gyms, some without adequate space to do things, but there is a licensure concern. How are we going to find all the PE teachers? What do the facility needs look like? How are we going to incorporate that into existing programs where we may have to make some very difficult decisions in order to add, let's say, 75 minutes of PE per week? What are we going to reduce in order to be able to put that inside of a regular school day? There are some just very interesting dynamics to this that, that haven't been vetted very well.
Okay, good, thanks. I also understand for outdoor school, they're requiring a full week now versus the typical two, three days that we normally have.
We've, we've heard multiple days, but we haven't heard, I don't know if it's
We don't know then.
A full week, and there's still some interpretation on that yet to occur as well. And I think there are some implications to, to outdoor education, while, again, we all understand the importance and the value of it, about what that means for our district. We had a meeting today with our teacher group, administrator meeting, and there's some very good questions asked about, you know, what if we have parents who are not interested in sending their child on an overnight function? There may be some religious beliefs or cultural beliefs or personal beliefs about not doing that, but that's the only option we provide. What about our special education students? There are only, there are limited number of camps in the state of Oregon who can currently take care of outdoor education. What does that mean for camps that want to do it but are not ADA accessible as a public entity? We really can't use them. And then, what does that mean for logistics? I think, again, it was, again, well-intended, but if, if anything, my recommendation, while I'm speaking only on behalf of myself, is there needs some time to really vet this and to think it through before full administration needs to occur. The implications are pretty significant.
Okay. Now, I guess one more question. You and I talked a while back about the dropout measure, I think it was 98.
Right.
That they, we're not allowed, currently, we're not allowed to use those dollars on existing programs?
That's correct. They have to be. New, new programs are possibly retooling or reworking of our existing programs, but let's, as an example, say, we spend $800,000 on current CTE programs, as an example, this money cannot be used to supplant those programs.
We expand it, but not.
Correct.
Okay.
Andy, I need a refresher on 98. Was there a dollar figure in that, in that bill?
Eight hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars per high school student.
So, there was the.
Yes. It equates to about a million, just under a million dollars for our school district.
So, the dollar figure is basically became law, and if the state doesn't come up with the, they only come up with 400, then the rest is... It's not something they can roll back then and say, well, we'll only do 400 for now, and could the legislature roll that back?
I believe that's up to the department, or, excuse me, the state Board of Education with measure 98, and their ruling and interpretation of the, of the law.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Speaking of mandates, real quick, I read a dated article here a couple weeks ago when it talked about mandated, or some kind of health screening, like dental screenings or something in school. Did that happen, or was that just a disgust?
Yes.
So, there is a new mandate for dental screenings, and since I don't have it in front of me, I'm pretty sure it's only for primary grades once a year, and we are working with, I don't know if I can tap mark, I'm not sure, for dental screenings.
The nurses will be helping.
Yeah. Usually, our school nurses help organize that, and I know in the past, in this community, we have such great dentists that usually one or two of them privately will kind of help organize that also. But that is a new mandate, and so the school district, along with every other school district, is trying to figure out how we get those screenings in. Basically, it's just an initial screening, and then we send that information off if we think there's kids that might need dental assistance, we send that information to parent with some county and state opportunities if they can't fund it themselves to get, seek dental help. But that is new this year.
Is that funded by the state?
No.
No?
No.
All right, thanks, Andy. Great update. Justin, come on up. Yep, finding up, I said, hi.
Okay. Are we on? There we go. Yeah, just following up on the election event and the events that fell after that, I just, I wanted to share that I very much appreciate the feedback from families, students, my staff, my administrative team, the district office, especially of Andy and Dandy and conversations that we've been able to have to, to work through this together. And just kind of wanted to give a report on where things are at and where we're moving forward from here. We're committed, I know we've said this at the last board meeting, you know, that we understand this is not a one-and-done event, that we have to have a sustained effort to put systems and actions into place that are also sustainable over long term. So, we're definitely committed to that. Presently, you know, I continue even today, I had two or three conversations either with parents and students or just students and staff around these types of issues. One that I did not even anticipate came up today, happened to do with a word that is used that I was not even really aware of, could, could be offensive to other students. And just, I mean, I won't share the, the story here today, but if you ever want to ask me, I could share it with you. But it was, you know, it just reminded me that there's sort of endless possibilities here for, for people to, to be offended and for us to get the word out there as far as, hey, you know, you're not necessarily in trouble for this, but consider this and understand this about using certain words. Definitely, words I told this young lady I had a conversation with, I didn't even know that today until we sat down and did a little research on it. So, it was a learning moment for me. So, in addition to that, we continue to check in with our students and staff that have been impacted most by this incident, and that is going well. I think as a school, we're, we're in a better place now, and people are feeling a lot better. Moving forward and formulating short and long-term plans to further strengthen our students' connectedness to one another and to the school, as well as the families connecting to the school, we have some, some plans in place. On the short-term plans, as was mentioned earlier by another speaker, to continue lessons in our, in our AGs, not that that's happening all the time, but where there are good fits and we find good resources, we'll put those in place. We, about two and a half weeks ago, we had adorned the school halls with posters, as well as digital posters on our flat screens, just promoting kindness and respect. We purchased T-shirts for our entire staff that on the front said, "We are one." I think I showed these to the board before, too, and on the back, "Moving forward together," to show our, our support and to be out in front of the school, and to have those on during conferences as well. Coming up, late January, I confirmed just today that we'll have a whole-staff equity training in the afternoon on January 30th, if everything goes as planned. That'll be a two-hour session that our entire staff will receive, and following that up, we hope to find eight to 10 people that could kind of be on a equity team in our building that would then become focus, kind of focus group facilitators for certain topics that we want to have kind of open discussions around. John Lenson is the gentleman, the consultant, also he is very much a gentleman, but he's, he's the consultant we've sought out. John, in addition to working with ODE, he's an adjunct professor at University of Oregon, PSU, and Lewis and Clark, and deals in areas of equity, leadership, culture, and communication. So, we have, I've really enjoyed, as have the others that have worked, and they express their, their joy for working with John. I think he, he brings a lot of wisdom to the table, and I, I expect that he will be a great resource for us. Another short-term, some of these kind of lend themselves into shorter or maybe a little bit longer-term goals are, we want to make sure our students are connected. One way to, to do that is to look at data even. Our students hopefully in at least one sport, one club, or one activity, and that's something we can look at in our student information system and, and tell, you know, we have some students that aren't connected. How might we be able to get them better connected to the school and therefore their families be better connected as well? I've also been doing some work, communication work mostly, trying to identify three to four parent, Latino parent leaders that could help build a Latino parent club at our school, whereby they would, they would basically be responsible, along with a school liaison that would be part of that group, too, to develop agendas for those meetings, and then we would, as the school leaders, bring the resources and whatever else was needed to those meetings so that we're giving those families what they truly need, not just what we're giving them, but making sure that they're, they're hearing and having access to resources that they feel they need. And then, longer term, we have to survey our staff, students, and even our families to kind of figure out what some longer-term goals will be for us. And so, that's, that's kind of an unknown right now, even though I think we have some early ideas. Until we get the, that, those results back, we won't know exactly what those longer-range goals will be. And that's, again, kind of under the advice of, of John Lenson, as something we need to do. And we've also discussed very, this is a long-term problem because it's not just a problem in Oregon, but it's a problem nationally, is trying to hire highly qualified teachers and other staff members that also represent the demographic of our school. So, that's, that's a very long-term plan we have, too, but it's a little bit more out of our control, but there are things we can do to help in that area as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Any comments or questions? Appreciate the work you're doing.
Thanks.
All right, Kevin Palmer, Butte Creek School.
Well, Kevin's coming up, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll just make a note that Steve Nielsen is not here this evening, but you have received your financial report. If you have any questions, let me know, or we can take those to Steve, and he apologized for, for not being here this evening. He's out today.
I just noticed that, right before you brought that up, we didn't talk about the financial report here.
All right. Good evening.
Evening.
You've got the report, the written report for Butte Creek. One thing I wanted to point out in that top section, which kind of goes through a bunch of the, the fall events so far, and kind of gets everybody up to speed, you see a lot of brand-new names. We've got nine people new to the building, but even more than that, even within the building, that are in new positions. So, when you look at the change, it's over 25% of our staff have, are either brand-new or in different positions. That's a lot of change for, for one of our schools, and it's just, it's been terrific. It's been nothing but positive, and it has really kind of changed the, the climate, an already good climate, to, to even better for the people that we've got on staff. But just a lot happening out there this fall. I did also want to point out, down under academic programs, and there's a lot of information on this and on the backside and, and all through, I'd be happy to answer questions, but I wanted to, to point out some special recognition to our Title I teacher, Libby Fashia, who is also the process manager for our Indistar program. I'm not sure how much that word comes out at, at board meetings, the Indistar. I'm not sure how much, uh, that word comes out at, at board meetings, the Indistar reporting system, uh, for the schools that are Title I schools. Um, six of them in our district, um, we have to come up with school improvement plans, you're constantly reporting to the state, to the feds, uh, in order to keep that funding going through your title program, based on your free and reduced meals count. But Libby Fosha, in addition to teaching a full day, every single day, with pull-out groups, intervention groups, she's the process manager through the Indistar reporting. It used to be that Title I schools would, would gather up all of their evidence, all of their data and put it in a three-ring binder and send it in. Now, it's all done online, uh, so that ODE can monitor your progress as you build your school improvement plan. It is a ton of work and we have a consultant that works through Dustin Haney, uh, with all the, the Title I schools in our district. The consultant often asks Libby Fosha what she thinks, should be. So, that shows you right there how far out in front of things, uh, this particular teacher is. So, in, uh, in addition to having her hands, uh, in virtually every after-school and evening event that we have to bring parents in and kids into the school. So, Libby Fosha, uh, just doing a terrific job in that regard at Butte Creek. Paperclip to the, to my report is, um, and this, you can just look at this and you know, time is, uh, an example of some evidence in a survey, staff survey that was done just recently, a week ago, for input onto our school-wide plan. And so we had thirty-four staff members out of the forty-one at Butte Creek were able to get their surveys in on time, um, on a variety of different indicators that all make up the Indistar reporting process and ODE's plan for title schools. So, um, that gives you a, a peek too, if you, if you look at those and read through them, it kind of gives you some insight, uh, into what's going on at Butte Creek, what we're doing really well right now, what we think should be a high priority, a low priority, uh, or, or whatever going forward. And so, um, we've had a chance to review this and it's very interesting. So, that guides our, our school. Everything we do is a combination of our, our site council and the Indistar process coupled with our PBIS slash climate team. The two work interchangeably, merged together beautifully to direct every single thing that happens at Butte Creek. It's a combination of those two groups, uh, along with the staff.
So, all these responses came from those two groups?
All these responses came from the staff.
From staff, okay.
This was a staff-only survey. Yeah. Um, also, we have two new policies that we've, we've been able to put into place, um, this year. One regarding homework and on the back of the, you may have already read it, since I gave those to you earlier, uh, this was our message at the start of the year to parents. Uh, we're no longer going to send home regularly planned homework. Now, if you don't get your work done during the day, just like all of us in our positions, you have to do it on the weekend or do it at home, but that's the way of the world. And so that's the way we've, we've moved and that took a lot of change on, on the part of a lot of teachers who are used to sending home weekly packets and that sort of thing. But this also came about as a result of a lot of discussion, uh, amongst our staff this summer as we came into the new school year. So, we want families to, uh, read together, we want them to play together or interact, eat together and go to bed on time. And that's their homework. And so far, the feedback has been tremendously positive, uh, from just about everybody we've been able to talk to. The other change has been, uh, in our grading systems. We're grading work, just like the other schools are, uh, one through five, standards-based, been doing that for a little while now. But, um, Butte Creek, as well as I think possibly Central Howell and Prattam, there may be another school, I'm not sure. District said it was okay for us this year to drop the letter grade, um, reporting piece completely off of that. Something that our middle school team, uh, was unanimous about wanting to do last year. And so we are reporting no letter grade whatsoever, uh, to families, to kids at all. It's all coming out, uh, on the report card, uh, as one through five in every category. And we're educating parents on that, the kids are into it, getting used to that. And to us, it's a continuation of what they're already used to with their younger children. Because they don't have letter grades in the younger, in the younger.
I guess I'll disagree with you there.
That's okay.
I, I really think it's important for middle school, particularly middle school, probably down to at least fifth grade, to have letter grade, just to get them adjusted to go to high school and college, because it prepares them.
Yeah, we've heard that argument. Um, we disagree with that.
Okay. Well, we'll disagree.
We'll agree to disagree and that's, we could do that politely and respectfully. But the thing that we see is, is a, we're glad to be able to do that, is to be, let's see. You know, the fact that, that, that our couple of schools, uh, are able to proceed in this manner, call it a pilot, if you want. We'll see, because we think, we think that it's a better way to go. So, I guess time will tell.
Kevin, I, I, I read the article that came out on the district website about when you first started the policy, I think it was profiled about three weeks ago, it came out on the, on the district website. And when it came out, I was like, wow, this is pretty cool, you know, I, I, and when to see you were going to be on the, the, the docket tonight, it was, it was great, because I'm like, great, I get a chance to dialogue with you a little bit more in-depth about this. I think it's a great way to kind of challenge the norm. I think we're always looking for new ideas, right? What is the definition of insanity is, you know, trying to do something the same ti- or something the same way all the time and expecting a different result.
Right.
Um, so I think it's a great way to kind of challenge the, the norm, challenge the standards that we have yet within our model, within the operating kind of parameters we've been given by federal government, state government in our district. I, I, I'm really curious to see how this is going to go, because I can't wait to see you again in the next few months or even, I come and hang out and have lunch with you during the year. Because I'd love to hear more about this, I think it's something we need to look more into as a district, uh, to kind of challenge the norm a little bit. And, and, you know, not to say everybody has to do this, but I think it starts somewhere.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be really curious to see how the, the scores on the test go this year, how we stay, you know, within our standards and looking at new ways of doing things. So, I know a lot of countries do this, I think Denmark, I believe, is one of the countries that, that does this. They don't have homework and their, their, uh, test scores are consistently heads and shoulders above what we hear and see here in the United States. And I agree with you, I don't think we give enough of our young kids enough time to enjoy themselves.
Yeah.
Uh, we forget what's, you know, they almost forget what it's like to be a kid again, you know? And, and I think that's important to, to, to eat together as a family too, to, to hang out together, to read together. And, and I like your point, to get to bed on time.
Yeah.
So, I, I really appreciate.
Yeah, we like it when they do that, for sure.
Makes your job easier, uh, and your staff.
Absolutely.
So, I appreciate your, you guys' willingness to, to kind of challenge the norm and I'm really excited to see how this goes, to see what we can do this, maybe as a pilot and, and to look at other ways we can expand this in our district.
Absolutely, thank you, appreciate that. Um, also want to point out, uh, we had summer school again this last summer, um, with fifty kids there, uh, twelve of them were, had perfect attendance in August. And, uh, it was great because we, um, we took them up to see The Lion King in, in Portland. And that was something our, again, Libby Fosha, Stacy Boo, some of those teachers that do summer school every year, when the, it, it, word came out that The Lion King was coming to kill her, they're like, you think we could take the kids in summer school? And I think they expected a no, but it was like, let's figure out how to do this. And so we did, put them on a bus and, and took them up and those kids were just amazed. You know, a lot of kids that had never even been out of the country before or to Portland, seeing a spectacle like The Lion King on Broadway. So, we got, you know, some of the online funding, we had people donating money to get, get it covered, so. It was a very cool way to, to, to kind of kick off the summer school out there. And down at the very bottom, um, twenty-four families, uh, adopted at Butte Creek this year. We do this every year for holiday gift baskets and food when it's Christmas time. That's all I've got unless you've got questions.
I have a couple of questions, um, regarding the homework. So, I, I have a niece at a different school that, that was struggling in reading and she had to have some intervention at home, she got caught up and everything's good now. For a situation like that, do you, do you call the intervention at home?
No, that's a different deal, yeah. If, if they need extra, that's happening, for sure. Yeah, it's just that regular, you know, first grade teacher has the, sends the packet home on Monday, it's got to be done by Friday, that sort of thing. In the middle school, the various teachers, you know, assigning homework, but no, if, if, if they need intervention help, um, you go home and work on math flashcards for ten minutes every night, that's a different thing than, that, that doesn't fit into this.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And then also facilities-wise, I know you got, we're hopefully get, going on the seismic, uh, upgrade next, next year.
Yeah.
Any, any other visil- facilities needs in your school that we should be aware of?
Any other facility needs? Um, we could use two more classrooms.
I mean, things broken, I can.
Oh, things that we could use some more parking, we could use HDTV's in every classroom. Don't you keep going?
Well, I'm looking for ongoing, ongoing issues that, that need to be fixed.
No, you know, the, the smell probably would be, uh, a, a big thing, I know that sounds a little weird, but, uh, it, I don't know if these guys even know the smell. Help a dead guy smell. Yeah, there's been a smell out there, it's, it's certainly is, uh, it's a hundred percent septic in nature.
Oh.
Under the building somewhere and it migrates, it seems like when it rains, it's worse, you know? And it'd be in my office one day, be in the library the next week, be over across the hall.
That's odd.
It's, it's, it's pretty putrid.
Drain field issues or?
I don't know, I think it, no, I think something's broken underneath the building.
Is maintenance still going?
Yeah, about five years ago, um, we, I think, I think Pete was still on board. We had a guy come out and, and round a camera down, some, some ducting and stuff underneath and it was like one of those creepy TV shows where it's all black and white, you're wondering what's going to come on next and, it was interesting, but I didn't find anything. But, but then last year, Joel Smallwood, there's a, a, a kind of a clean-out in the girls' restroom that, um, he wanted to uncap that thing and send it down because it would give a totally different look and, and we're bordering on too much information here probably for our audience, but, um, it, uh, that, that didn't happen, so we, we'd like to get on that yet, maybe see if there, something's broken somewhere that releases, you know?
That's big.
Kind of a horrible smell, so. You know, get used to it, you get nose-blind, you know, it's, it's not the worst thing in the world, anyway, so.
Good.
Yeah, otherwise, um, you know, that new play shed out there, that's just a couple of years old, works terrific, um, doing pretty well.
Good.
It's been a great fall so far at Butte Creek.
Any other questions for Kevin? Alright, thanks you very, very much.
Thanks a lot.
Alright, Mark Hannan, Silver Crest.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
Um, I would like to report that, uh, Silver Crest has no septic issues, so, um. That's good news. There's going to be a theme tonight with my presentation, um, with the new position, there've been a lot of people that have stepped up and helped me and I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize them. As you know, um, half of my position is district, uh, services, district programs, and half of my position is Silver Crest principal. So, I'll start tonight with the, um, uh, district services portion. Uh, I'm responsible for district five oh fours and there's currently, uh, seventy-one students district-wide on five oh four plans. This means that those students have a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more la- major life activities. That's a long sentence to say that, um, they could, they could have issues with walking, seeing, hearing, concentrating, even interacting with others, to name a few. That number continues to grow as we bet- better identify students and the state continues to add, um, automatic, uh, five oh four identifications. Uh, and when I say automatic, it's things like, uh, insulin-dependent students are automatically qualified, um, epileptic students automatically qualify, things like that. Uh, our district five oh four coordinators and administrators have recently gone through a five oh four training by Mr. Winston Cornwall of the Oregon Department of Ed and we continue to improve in our service to this very important, uh, population. Uh, I'm also responsible for nursing services, as you heard earlier. Um, we currently employ three nurses with one of those nurses recently hired. Uh, we contract through Silverton Hospital and, uh, they complete the hiring, uh, process. I have not met the new nurse, she begins next week and hope to do so then. Uh, a thank you to Sue Ellen Nida and Geraldine Sheets for all the work they currently do and have done as we were shorthanded throughout the hiring process. They completed health protocols, hearing and vision screenings and of course, the emergencies that take place at all of our schools. Uh, and thank you to Silverton Hospital for this unique relationship as most districts contract through their, uh, local ESDs. Uh, ELL services, um, we currently have a hundred and eighty-eight ELL students throughout the district. I reported to you in August, uh, as required by the state. And I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the ELL instructors throughout the district. They do a wonderful job helping, uh, second language students learn English. I especially want to thank though, uh, Kristen Jank, a portion of her, uh, FTE is dedicated specifically to, uh, reporting and compliance and without her, I would be toast. She, she does a great job of keeping the district and myself, uh, apprised of everything that changes and it literally can change daily with this population. Uh, migrant services, we currently have seventy-one migrant students district-wide. I've, I've recognized her before, but I always like to do this because she's so good. I'd like to recognize Monica Hansen for all the hard work she does with the high school migrant students. She's an amazing resource for that population and if those students stay through their senior year at Silverton High School, she graduates every one of them. Uh, finally, homeless services. We currently have fifty-seven students district-wide that qualify under, uh, the McKinney-Vento Act, which means that they receive services for being homeless. Uh, this has probably been the biggest learning curve for me, uh, as I stepped into this position. And, uh, I'd like to acknowledge the Silver Crest secretary, Abby Hayes, as part of her FTE is dedicated to tracking and, uh, providing transportation for those homeless students and she does an amazing job. Finally, Silver Crest. Uh, we currently have a hundred and thirty-one students at Silver Crest. Uh, we have room for students in all of our classrooms except kindergarten and our four-five blend, so feel free to recruit for me. I'm, uh, we'll take, uh, we'll take students in all those, uh, classrooms. We recently held conferences with ninety-four percent of our families attending those conferences. Uh, I'd like to invite each of you to attend our winter concert coming up, uh, next Monday, the nineteenth, at six-thirty in our gym. Uh, I wanted to also mention, you may not, well, you, you acted on it, so you know this, but, uh, you may not recall this. We began the school year with Lucy Miller and our four-five blend and, uh, her husband's new job is moving them to Portland, so she unfortunately had to resign. Uh, I was fortunate enough however, to hire a former Salem Kaiser and Silver Crest, uh, teacher, uh, in the position, Sandy McLean. And, uh, I want to recognize her because the, the transition has been seamless, she's just stepped right in and, and done an amazing job. Lastly, I'd like to bring your attention to the picture I provided you. That's a picture of the new athletic field at Silver Crest. Lot of work went into the, that project with almost no cost to the district, very little cost to the district. Uh, I'm no, I know I'm going to miss some folks, but I'd like to thank Wilco, Ioka Farms, Dan Stadley, Sean Poole and family, Silver Crest Booster Club, Mike Sharplos with Premier Ag Services, Jan and Jason Hub and the folks at Drake's Crossing Nursery, Ron Duda with the district, and especially Ken Johnston. Without him, we wouldn't have been able to get the job done, he's a parent in Silver Crest District and was, was just amazing. He, I'd call him up or he'd email and he'd be there and he donated time and resources, it was, it was incredible. Uh, the entire Silver Crest community rallied around this project, so if I missed anyone, the, the staff and students of Silver Crest thanked them. Thanks. Questions?
Questions for Mark. I'll ask you the same question, any facilities concerns you have in your building? Or any challenges in the building that you're concerned about?
Uh, technology, that, that really is our, our main focus and it's the focus that I've asked our booster club to address. Uh, also, uh, just, just in our, um, from classroom to classroom, the technology differs from a- Just in our, from classroom to classroom, the technology differs from a pretty dramatic range. And it's something I'm working with our tech guys on and something that the Booster Club will help. And I'm, this is year three of a three-year lease that paid for the computers in the computer lab up there. If we continue to get that technology money, I'm going to be looking at evening that out throughout the classrooms. But really from a facility standpoint, it's a real gem for the district. But technology is something that we need to address.
Good, thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, thanks, Mark. All right, Andy mentioned the financial report. I don't know if you all had a chance to take a look at it. Any comments or questions on the financial report before we move on? All right. Don't see anybody raising their hand, so any board reports this evening? Correspondents, we've had lots and lots of emails. Anything else beyond that I'm not aware of? Okay. All right, go ahead and open it up with the second audience with visitors. This is limited to our action item regarding the WESD. Anybody like to comment on that? All right, move on to the action item, which is approval of the 2017 through 2019 local service plan from Lamont Education Service District. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
So move, is there a second?
Second.
Move is second, any further discussion? Also a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have no further business, so meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming.